Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elia. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear your dog.
Dog's here. You got him just in time, Jack.
Welcome to the March 23 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has the dog this morning. And he hasn't been doing the quote of the day, but yesterday I went and had Chinese and I got a little fortune cookie, so I'm gonna read it. It says, "It's better to ask questions than to know all the answers." So, that was my fortune cookie for yesterday.
Come here.
Wow, he's pretty.
Yeah, good-looking dog. Our featured dog this week is a two-to-three-year-old male rottweiler. He was found around Toledo and East 28th Street in Lorraine. He'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. For those of you looking for a really good dog, please stop by and if a rottweiler's not your choice, we've got plenty of other dogs. Come on.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have the public hearing on the Schroeder Ditch, Carlyle and New Rush Townships, under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioners. I will need a brief executive session. I would like to talk to you about ongoing labor negotiations, specifically the labor contract at the detention home with the Teamsters. They don't have any personnel actions at Goldmakers this morning. That subject is allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session and acts at the conclusion of a regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and have that talk. Thank you.
Approved waive the reading of the same of the County Commissioners Meeting minutes of March 16, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Support for Western Reserve Land Conservancy, application for Ohio Department of Agriculture, Clean Ohio Agriculture Easement Purchase Program, for the purchase of an agriculture easement that will preserve approximately 213 acres of the Babett Investment Company, LLC, farmland in Rochester Township, which this is located on the north side of State Route 162. And Andy McDowell from Western Reserve is here.
Wonderful.
This one. Morning.
Good morning, thank you Commissioners. This is an application that we did similar a couple of years ago with Jarvis Babcock's farm in Rochester Township. This is just a little bit west of his farm. It'll be the second farm in Lorraine County to go through the program. The land conservancy sponsoring eight applications this year, four of which are out in this way, one in Lorraine, Ashland, Huron Counties. So hopefully it'll be successful and part of the application process requires a resolution of support from not only the township trustees, but also county commissioners. Last week, the Rochester Township trustees also approved a resolution of support to proceed with the application, so.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Great program. I'll move.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved enter into service agreement with Minman HR Risk Management Services, Inc., Cleveland, in the amount of $18,500, paid monthly at a rate of $1,541.66 for claims administrator effective retroactive January 1st through January 1st, 2014, for workers' comp, authorized county administrator execute on necessary documents.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
This is just a difference of $500, correct?
That and there was a name change.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer except in generalized 2010 report on bridges in the county, there are 230 bridges ranging in span from 10 feet to 305 feet. Last year, the filing projects were completed. Quarry Road Bridge 0820 replaced the existing structure with concrete abutments and pre-stress concrete box beam deck. Beard Road Bridge 0369 replaced the existing structure with concrete abutments and pre-cast concrete box beam deck. 2011 projects are Parsons Road Bridge 0435, a half-mile west of State Route 303 in Carlyle and Grange Townships, the complete structure replacement. Green Road Bridge 0135, half-mile south of Ward Road, Henrietta Township, which is a joint project in Erie County, complete structure replacement. New London Eastern Road Culvert 0108, half-mile east of Gore Orphanage Road, Rochester Township, which will be a complete structure replacement. And Quarry Road Culvert 0565, 500 feet south of Jones Road Wellington Township, for a complete structure replacement.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise bids for Parsons Road Bridge 0345, replacement in Grange and Carlyle Township, notice to be in the journal on March 25th and April 1st, and be open at 2:30 PM and April 12th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise bids for Garbail Replacement Project Phase Four, notice to be in the Chronicle March 25th, April 1st and 8th, and be open at 2:00 PM and April 19th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
No additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in the executive session.
There's no law today.
Oh.
Commissioners, your report.
Just two things. NACO had a announcement that there is going to be a $600,000 grant to assist 10,000 homeless veterans, and it's gonna be available to help them reintegrate into a better life. And if you have a veteran that you know that is homeless, you can contact Ken Fenner and it's F-E-N-N-E-R, and his phone number is 202-693-4728. And then our dog warden had notified me that we received a $2,000 grant from Ohio Pet Plates, and that is for our spay and neuter program. So those of you who are not aware, at our dog pound, all of our dogs are now being spayed and neutered prior to adoption. See you in my report.
Thank you. I attended the Board of Directors meeting, the County Commissioners Association, on Friday. Quite lively discussion. We were supposed to meet with someone from the Governor's Budget Office, but he wasn't available. He called out sick or he was out of town. But a lot of discussion on how all the counties are gonna go forward handling budget cuts in the Governor's new budgets. So we are looking at different ways of combining services and issues that the Commissioners brought forth when it comes to consolidating services. And also, go Buckeyes! Great game Sunday, so. End of my report.
Two things here, just wanna mention, I met with a fourth grader actually from Eastwood Elementary School in Hudson, Ohio. Her father has a business here in Lorraine County, and the school does a project where the students have to pick a county and learn about it. Maggie Lehman decided to come here to Lorraine County, so I spent about 20 minutes with her going over Lorraine County and what we do here. And on Tuesday, I met with the Lorraine County Community College Journalism Class, which I want to thank Cliff Anthony, the Assistant Professor, for bringing the students out here. Thank you. End of report.
Madam Clerk?
Board Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
We got five minutes before we start the public hearing.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Board, other than about the ditch hearing or the budget issues yet? Oh, Doug, I saw you standing up. Come on up. We've got five minutes. I just figured it would take longer than that.
No, I will not. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Doug.
I actually just have a brief statement. The judges in discussing the letter from your Fiscal Director, it indicated that I should come over and make, just basically make the following statement. It's the position of the Court that the allocation that was made in 2010 and again in 2011, subsequent to our changing of our hours, is what we believe to be the reasonable and necessary expenses of the Court, and that is gonna be our position of what we need. And that's all I'm in a position to say. If you have questions that you'd like to forward, you know, I'll be happy to take them back and have an answer developed for you.
Well, Doug, I can probably comment, 'cause I've been meeting with some of the elected officials. I spoke to a couple of the common pleas judges, I haven't seen the DRs yet, and I spoke with the Prosecutor's Office, a couple minutes with the auditor and Deputy Auditor, the County Recorder, and probably...
They're saying they can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, they can't hear me? All right, I spoke to some of the elected officials around the county on some of the proposals I brought forward, and probably the most prudent way of handling it is probably holding meetings where we get together on a Tuesday afternoon per department to see how we can do some restructuring and/or propose which services we're going to cut, once we figure out what our final number is going to be. As we all know, we all have services that we provide that aren't necessarily mandated, but needed, and those might have to be some of the discussions coming forward and just to get a feel where, you know, we've gotta save those few million dollars over the next year and a half. So I mean, I hope to have the judges engaged with that. Maybe we can start setting up times and then figure by the end of the second quarter what the actual cuts are to carry us through 2012. I mean, that would be my intent now, just through discussions. Because to make the cuts, we've got, as, we had prepared for 2012 in our budget. I mean, 2011 in our budget, with the set aside expecting a 25% cut. So we've got some room to maneuver there, I would think, for another quarter while we figure out what's gonna happen through 2012 and just move forward with that, whether, you know, reductions in staff, reductions in services, reduced hours, days not operating, whatever might be the best proposal to get us through 2012, if we're not gonna have any additional revenues. You can share that with the judges from Ted Kalo. I don't know about the rest of the Board, but that was my opinion with talks, and I haven't had a chance to share anything with the Commissioners.
Sure.
I would just say that no person, position, or program can be sacred right now. We have to look at everything. I mean, county-wide, department-wide, elected official-wide, you know, we have to look at everything. Like Ted said, we're good this year, but next year's our problematic year, so we have to look at everything for right now. I personally believe that the certificate that they've given us is really on the low side, so I'm a little more optimistic than maybe my fellow Commissioners or even Budget Departments. So I always, I always look at the glass as being half-full, so that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, if you can also give them a message for me. You know, our temporary budget's 49.7 million, where projected revenue, general fund revenue is around 42 million. We carried over $7.7 million in order to make this. We're gonna be losing another 2.4 million from the general, or the local general fund. It's gonna put us down to about $40 million. So we're looking at about a 19.5% decrease for 2012, for the state financial year. There's gonna have to be cuts, and I understand that there's programs that they believe in, but if it's not a mandate by the state, it's gonna, we're gonna have to take a look at it. And what I would like for the judges to do is to take a look at all non-mandate services and really come up with a cost and explain to the taxpayers why they should be paying for these non-mandated services.
I will share your thoughts.
I'll send an email out to everyone as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
9:45?
It is 9:45.
You can start our ditch hearing.
Notice of public hearing for Schroeder Ditch, Carlyle Township, to place some permanent county maintenance in accordance with Section 6131 in the Ohio Revice Code, and notice hereby, given that this public hearing is to be considered placing Schroeder Ditch in permanent county maintenance. The Schroeder Ditch project was in Carlyle and New Rush Township, consisting of Schroeder Main Ditch and Lateral Number Two, Branch Number Two, Schroeder Lateral Two, and Schram Lateral. The ditch is 12,445 feet, total cost of construction was $197,124, with a maintenance collection of $2,125.86 per year, with 58 parcels being assessed. This ditch has been completed by Lorraine County Engineer and Soil and Water Conservation District, and part of agreement with the property owners was that this ditch be placed on county maintenance after construction. Resolution 1180 adopted February 9th, provided for this hearing. Notice was published in the Chronicle on March 8th. 54 residents were notified by certified mail on March 4th.
Thank you. Jerry, can you swear in, anyone who's wishing to give testimony this morning?
Would everyone who was going to make some statements or would like to comment on this, we're gonna ask that you stand up and be sworn, and even if you're not sure, if you think you might wanna say something, go ahead and stand up and we'll go from there. So. Do each of you swear or affirm the statements you're about to give will be the truth, as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury.
Nancy, Soil and Water, have any comments to make?
Not at this time, but I will be here for the duration.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, are you representing the Engineers' Office today? Any comments from you or Linda?
You have to come up to the microphone, Wayne.
Just if he said no, that's what I was listening for, David.
No, sir, I don't have any statement right now. Everything was handled, the ditch cleaning was done by SCS, and now we're proposing to have the ditch put on maintenance. Per parcel, we'll pay their allotted per benefit, and this will be maintained by the Engineers, and we'll have a yearly inspection, as normal.
Okay, the standard procedure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Any township trustees from the affected townships wishing to testify? Anyone else wishing to make comments?
I forgot to put that on the drive.
Just please come up, sir.
I need your, I put signs up there, but I do need your, I need your name and address when you speak, please.
Good morning.
Robert Schorr, the Road Superintendent for Carlyle Township, and I just have some comments about the Schroeder Ditch. And I also have some pictures here for the Board, if it's okay.
Multiple copies or single copies?
Oh, it's single copies, but it's for you. Back in 2007, we know the Schroeder Ditch was clean on the upstream end, which greatly benefited the people up that way. But I would like it to be known that the downstream end now has a little more water than it used to, and it comes quite fast. Carlyle Township has Blanch Avenue and Ethel Drive and Country View Way that are now getting floodwaters upon them because of the speed that the water gets there. So really not against the cleaning and that, just wish that it went further, and we need to do some work downstream, if it ever is a possibility in the future, to help alleviate the problems there. The pictures will speak for themselves. Those are from 2008, and what happened here, you know, a couple of weeks ago, it was greater than those, so there was more water.
Looks like my front yard and backyard from a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Yeah, there was water everywhere.
Sometimes you fix one problem and you create another, huh?
Yeah. The Engineers' Office does have the twin culverts on Blanch Avenue on their schedule for replacement, hopefully maybe next year. So I think at this point, that's the bottleneck, and maybe it'll improve things if a new structure has enough capacity to it. But just wanted to make you aware that not everything is perfect.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, comments? I knew you'd be up here.
Good morning, Nancy Funai, Administrator of Lorraine Soil and Water. I understand the problems. I got a call from the Township Trustee from Carlyle explaining this. The ditch program that we had was a great program, cleaning Schroeder Ditch went very well. We worked with the landowners on an individual basis. However, we did try to attempt to go on the south side of Rusha Road, all the way to the Black River. And as you know, as the program had stated, that all individuals needed to comply with the petition that we set forward to have the Commissioners pay the fee, and then of course, it would go into maintenance. There were quite a few people on the south side of Rusha Road that would not agree to a $30 a year maintenance or a $3 per acre of maintenance. We explained to them in detail just exactly how much construction was costing on the north side of the road. We couldn't get an estimate on the south side till we had everybody comply, but tried to make them understand they would not move forward on it. So it's not that we didn't want to take it to the Black River, that was our ultimate goal. However, we needed everybody in compliance. With this last batch of rain, you were looking at almost 100-year storm, and with the angles that it takes right there at Rusha Road by West Ridge, it beats it quite well, and it will, it'll push water further south. So there's nothing we can do about it. I'm sorry that that happened, but I just wish we would've had more landowners comply. It'd have been great to take it to the Black River.
We'll explain the process, Nancy. It's interesting, and why, basically, everyone has to agree.
When we start these, when we had the ditch program, what it was is everybody needed to agree. If one person held up the project, we could not move forward. To make this work was, we had to go through actual petitions that were done through our office, and it's a separate petition through the Engineers' Office, and they all signed papers, they all signed agreements, and we moved forward with the bids. If we could not get, again, if we could not get all individuals to cooperate or to agree, because this was strictly a volunteer basis, the project could not move forward. So like I said, taking it to the Black River would've been the greatest thing, but unfortunately, it didn't work that way.
You also might want to point out that with the work of the SWAC that's going on, some of those difficulties that were experienced are gonna be processed away, and we're gonna be relying upon the Board, because ditch cleaning's gonna be one of our priorities, and we're not gonna allow one person to hold up a process that's, that's going to get these ditches cleaned and move them on to some form of partial maintenance, along with maintenance from the Stormwater Utility Fund. So we're working on that, and you're gonna see a lot of these ditch projects, I would say, within the next year. You've been coming to the meetings.
I have, yes.
I think the discussion's been very promising and progressing in the right direction, so this is gonna be a big issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come up, sir.
Oh, they want to know what SWAC is. Soil...
Sorry, Stormwater Advisory Committee, and they will be sending up their proposed processes to the Board of Commissioners, which is actually the governing board of the district, for your review and approval.
Yes, sir, your name?
Good morning, Jim Schuster, 43, 237 Rusha Road.
Thank you, go ahead, Jim.
I just had a question about, there's 58 landowners that are participating in this. Is the airport part of this?
No.
Is the airport property part of this?
No.
Wayne Miletty would be probably the only one that could really answer that.
Wayne?
I mean, they're not on my notification list.
Well, yeah, we need to know why not, then.
And there was 50, there's actually 54 property owners that were, I mean, that were notified, but there are 58 parcels being assessed.
All righty. Yeah, when I went to the office to check out the land, where the land was, it looked like the airport was benefiting from this also. That was my question.
Yeah, we'll get Wayne up here from the Engineers' Office in just a second, Mr. Schuster.
The gentleman asked about the airport property.
The airport property is in the watershed.
Nancy, up here, please. And Wayne, probably both of you tag-team this issue.
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting I have to come up here. Nancy Funai, again. The airport does consume, or deliver a lot of water into that watershed. There's, it's a huge section, you got a lot of runoff from the runways there, and that happened regardless whether we cleaned the ditch or not. It's never gonna go away. If they add more runway, and they'll discredit to the airport, but the more impervious service you add, the less it's gonna be able to soak in. So naturally, it's gonna run off to the sides and run into the ditch. But yes, the whole airport's included into this watershed.
Are they being charged the maintenance fee?
I really can't hear these little murmuring comments.
Is, I asked if the airport is being charged the maintenance fee?
They should be.
They should be?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have them on my access list.
I'm working on it right now. Okay.
I guess, that would be my question, so the 58, I understand the 58 people are contributing to this $2,000 and some dollars then, right?
54 people, with 58 parcels.
Okay. And so I have 25, basically 25 acres, so I'm contributing $75 a year for this. If the airport has approximately 1,100 acres, are they contributing $3 per acre to this also? And my understanding is, if that's the case, then this $2,000 is really a lot less than what the airport even has there. The airport has 1,100 acres, so I would just be curious to see how much the airport is contributing to this also.
To be honest, I don't have them being assessed on my...
Okay, so they're not being assessed for this all? That would be, I would think it'd only be fair for the airport to contribute their fair share.
Jerry? Do you have any idea why?
I mean, I received this from the Engineers' Office.
Engineer, Wayne?
The 58 parcels are the ones that have butted the ditch. The water may come from the airport. They may have, their water may pass through that ditch, that's correct, but in the original petition, they would've been included. And I don't think they're on that list, so they're not gonna pay.
Is there, is there other property owners that don't abut, but benefit, that are in the watershed, but are not paying?
It would depend on all the way stretched out or wherever it extends to, but just the petition people that wanted it cleaned, that had butted the ditch, were involved in the process.
So the airport does not abut the ditch, so they weren't involved in the petition process? So that's why they're not...
Here's the question, it's really, actually, simple. Is the ditch filed on the airport property? Does it run through the airport property, is it filed? If it's not filed on the airport property, then it doesn't need maintenance.
Correct.
Simply because water drains from a property into a ditch does not automatically include that property on the maintenance if the ditch is not filed on the property. If the airport is taking care of the maintenance on the ditch, which I don't know, I'm only, I'm looking at this way, then they wouldn't be included on the ditch maintenance unless they wanted to opt into that or the property was filed and they were ordered into the maintenance on that.
Correct. Just because it's a contributory doesn't mean that it's part of the direct ditch maintenance. Because it runs off under the watershed to the ditch. Correct, Nancy?
Right, and my apologies. I thought they were on there, so my apologies.
Okay.
Okay, well, I live on- Did that answer your question?
Kind of, but I live on the south side of the road, so when you say abut to the ditch, the land has to kind of join up to the ditch then? Because I live on the south side of the road, uh, my land-
My understanding-
-might shed into it, but it doesn't really abut any part of that Schroeder ditch.
My understanding is that the land would have to abut the ditch in order to be assessed for the ditch maintenance. You would have to be responsible, uh, in some form, uh, legally for maintenance on that ditch. If your property doesn't abut that ditch, I, I'm not sure that that would meet the definition of responsibility for maintenance on that ditch. So, does any of your property include any portion of that?
Does it matter what side of the road you're on?
Well, I would think so, because usually right-of-way's and property lines go to the center line of a road. They don't normally go across to the other side of the road. Uh, at least that's my understanding, and Wayne may have a better, uh, a better response to that, but it doesn't sound like it to me.
Yeah, it just seems like the airport is benefiting as much as I'm benefiting, so-
It's, it's, it's sounding, it's sounding similar.
Right.
Commissioner, there's some questions on this. You know, we can always hold this, and we can-
Right, we have thirty days on going forward or not.
His, his, he's, you own twenty-six point nine acres?
Yes.
And your benefit is eight point two, only eight point two of your acres are actually benefiting, it says. So, while everybody else's rate is thirty dollars, yours is only three dollars.
Okay, see, I, I, I assumed that my whole twenty-six acres would be-
Or is that-
Your assessment letter should state the same thing, that you were only being benefited eight point two acres.
Why is it three and everybody else is thirty? Oh, okay.
Anything ten acres or greater is three dollars per acre.
Okay, I'm sorry. She said anything over ten acres is three dollars an acre rather than a flat thirty dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I, I wasn't told that my land was broken up into a different parcel there, so. But my, my concern would still be that the airport does benefit some way from this, from this ditch. And I, I would think that they would be, uh, at least share in, in the responsibility of paying for the maintenance. So, that, that's all my thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioners, I would, uh, I would ask that you table this and let us take a look at this.
Well, we can finish the public hearing and then make a decision.
Well, you'll probably have to come back-
And do another public hearing?
If we were gonna change-
Well, we can, we can reschedule it right now for another hearing day, but I think we need to get some better information on how the assess-
Well, let's see, anybody else has something else? Let's see, the gentleman's standing up. You'd like to comment, sir? We'll let him, if they came here, we'll go through it, and we can look into that other part.
We might have other questions to address, so go ahead. Hi.
Uh, Ralph Groener, uh, four three one eight three Russia Road. I live next door to Mr. Schuster. And on your comment about if your land is not abut to the ditch, you should be, my land is not abut up to that ditch either. So, uh, according to your testimony, I should not be assessed, uh, thirty dollars per year also.
Well, I wasn't giving testimony, I was just giving some explanation of what we understood. I mean, but the-
I mean, if, if, if the airport does not abut up against, and they don't have to pay, then I don't, if you abut to the, the ditch, then, you know, you should be accounted for as the ditch. If you're not, I don't see why you should be. I've lived in townships all my life, and when I lived down, uh, West Ridge, we have a huge ditch out back, and we just maintained it ourselves. We cleaned it and took care of it ourselves. I mean, it was a normal thing to do.
I think, I think what I-
We didn't charge nobody else on West Ridge to clean the ditch.
I think what I said was that the ditch would have to be your responsibility. Therefore, your property would have to include the ditch or abut up to the ditch. So, there was some responsibility. I don't, I'm not familiar with your property, sir, but I, I, you know, so, I wasn't saying that there was no responsibility there by anybody simply because the ditch, uh, was, was being used. Now, if it goes through the airport, and the airport has a responsibility to it, and it's filed, and they're put on the maintenance list, it would be the same as anybody else. That's why I asked to take a look at the map and see what, and see what they did.
Well, my question is that all these, all the people that receive these letters are also part of the petition process. So, you asked to have this ditch cleaned at one point? You were, you petitioned for it?
Me personally, I never asked. In fact, I don't even know where the ditch is, to tell you the truth.
Really?
There was no map or nothing. They just told me I'm a excess, I have to pay for a ditch. It don't, there's no map or nothing that came with my certified letter or nothing. I don't even know where, where the thing is. I've been asking some of the people in our area, where is this ditch? I ain't never heard of it, till now.
But you did sign the petition for maintenance?
No, he said he didn't.
No.
Uh-uh.
Huh.
Is it unanimous?
Yeah, how could it be a unanimous petition? How long have you lived at your property? Maybe the person before you?
Twelve years.
Oh, no.
This is only a couple of years ago.
No.
You haven't listened to petition-
Some light for us, help us on some of these questions.
Nancy, you have the petitions?
I do.
She's going to get the petition. We're gonna get to the bottom of this, don't worry. Is there somebody else that wanted to, to speak on this matter? You can come on up. We'll, we'll get to that. Good morning, man. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara-
You can pull that down so you don't have to stretch. There you go.
Uh, my name is Barbara Tachus, and I live at one zero two two zero West Ridge Road. And, um, I, it's really nice. I, I can't complain about the ditch. But anyway, what I wanna say is, uh, it's so inviting. I'm next to the bike path, and it's very inviting, and last year, um, I've had people come off the bike path walking, 'cause many people walk on the path, and I was wondering whether a no trespassing sign could be put on the gate over by the bike path. They just walk along the creek because it's really, you know, very nice that maintenance road is there. And if they could put up a no trespass sign on that gate-
Would that be the engineer or the township?
That would be Metro Parks.
Oh, Metro Parks?
Do I go to Metro Parks?
We'll, uh, we'll mention it to Metro Parks. We have some other business with Metro Parks, so we'll, we'll mention it to, uh-
You make a note of that?
I have, it's already being made.
Okay, there's another gate, uh, in the back on the, uh, creek, uh, because it crosses my property two times. And, uh, there's another gate in the back that comes in from Russia Road, and if they could put a sign up there, but that would be either the township or somebody, or engineers. Because people, for some reason, uh, feel, you know, acreage is open for, you know, to open to the public. I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is embarrassing.
What?
I think we need to look at what the engineers had submitted according to what we have, because I have here a petition from the airport that they had signed, so-
What, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see this whole thing go to the SWAC, to Community Development, so we can take a look at it. We now have the Stormwater Management District in place. We really need to start putting this into the Stormwater Management District and work with you and with the engineers. But, uh, we can't have the Stormwater Management District up and collecting fees and have this separate process running concurrently. That's why I just mentioned to Jerry, we didn't know that was out there. Uh, so I, I think we need to look at our procedure for what we're doing with, in, in the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and, and then vet it through there and then bring it back to the board. Uh, we can probably do that pretty quick, but I wanna work with you, Nancy. You've been great help, so.
So, how about if we, how about if we let the last couple of people who have testimony, do we then continue the meeting, Jerry, or close it and re, have a new public hearing? What's the legal-
You, you could, if you don't wanna have to republish and everything, then you would just-
Continue it with a date.
Continue it with a set date.
Okay, that'll be my intent.
But, you know, we may have to do that anyway if we find people that haven't been included, that should've been included, but-
And we'll get with the engineer's office next week and get our lists so they're accurate and matching.
Okay, can we, last, last couple, three people wanna testify? If we'll take your testimony, and then we'll do a continuance of the meeting. Sir, your name and address?
My name is Al Born. I live at four one nine three five Ethel. I've been there for thirty-eight years. And, uh, I have, uh, four lots that abut the, uh, stream or ditch. In the last couple of weeks, it was, uh, lots worse than it's ever been in all those years. I've lost three, four, maybe five feet of lawn along the edge of the creek. And, uh, it has been up just in the edge of my lower garden a few times, but this time it was completely covered with about two feet of water. I do have pictures of it, but I haven't got them developed.
Are you part of the fifty-eight parcels?
No, you're part of the pe, the section where people didn't want a petition for it, correct?
Right, I was never asked to petition, and my neighbor that's with me was never asked.
Okay. Well, maybe they got to somebody before you who said no, and they have to have a unanimous-
Yeah, she explained to me that's what happened.
Okay.
But I don't think we should continue to be flooded like that because somebody upstream don't wanna, wanna pay the small amount.
Right.
Uh, they had a car totaled. Neighbor next to the house right now, there's people there cleaning it out. It flooded, and, uh-
Well, maybe they'll be more apt to sign the petition after all the flooding occurs.
Well, I'm sure, uh, I never heard of a petition until this, this little bit ago.
Okay.
But, uh, that creek at one time, when I moved there, kids were running and jumping across it. Can't do that now. A deer can't jump across it. And, uh, it, it needs something done, because this is gonna continue and get worse unless we do something.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I can interject for just a moment, and I'll explain what he's asking. When we started on the south side of Russia Road, there were a handful of people that refused to go along with the petition. When we do a ditch project, we can't, okay, we're not gonna take this section, but we'll skip this one and, and take the rest of it. That's not how we agreed with the commissioners to clean this project. It was from start to finish.
Right.
So, I had talked to this gentleman, I explained that, but just so you understand, we could not skip. It had to be from one end to the other.
Right, okay.
Doesn't do a whole lot good to make it look like an hourglass.
Well, no, it doesn't, and it's not effective.
Commissioner, there, there are ways of dealing with that, and as I told you, it's been under, under discussion, uh, with, with, with the folks we're working with on, on the advisory committee. And we're gonna be looking to the commissioners to remove interferences and barriers to doing a much longer stretch of certain ditches, simply because one person interferes with the good of the many. Uh, you, you, there are authorities that the board has to, to deal with that. And we're gonna be recommending large projects that, that are gonna require those authorities to be exercised soon.
Next?
Greg Smith, uh, four three one five oh Russia Road. Uh, I do remember signing the petition several years ago, but my property does not abut up against the ditch, but I, it seemed like it was a good idea, 'cause my backfield does, you know, stay underwater in the springtime. But this year, it still does, so it hasn't helped me any. So, I, I'm glad to see you're gonna step back and, uh, assess the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's Norm Gondor. I got property at, uh, four three four two three Russia Road. There's three houses there and stuff right here in the, in the curve right there. And when it floods, I mean, we got like a retention pond there now. It's more so now than ever.
Are you part of the petition ditch, or are you not the petition ditch for location purposes?
I'm on the south side.
Okay, so you're not part of this petition? Okay.
I got noticed there and stuff there for this there. But when they put the, when they widened Russia Road over there and stuff last year, they put a bulkhead across the street there and stuff. We've never had water, this much water in there. I mean, they come up, I'm two, I'm three hundred feet off the road. I come up about two hundred and fifty feet up to the house there and stuff. You go out by the end, by the end of the road, and I think there, there's another person here and stuff couldn't verify this there. We must've had a good foot and a half to two foot of water out there. If I didn't have stakes in my driveway there and stuff, I wouldn't be able to find my driveway. Now, when they did, well, another thing I wanna ask you too. Two thousand and seven is when they cleaned this ditch. When was the last time it was cleaned before that?
She says she doesn't think it ever was.
How long has the ditch been there?
Beginning of time.
What, when they cleaned the ditch, and I'm sure they had to think of there and stuff, they were gonna form a bottleneck there and stuff there somewhere down the road. If it's not gonna be cleaned all the way here to the Black River, what did they have in mind when they cleaned this and they didn't address that?
I think what the intent is, is that they would keep moving down while the dollars were available and the residents petitioning to have their part of the ditch cleaned and maintained. The minute you hit a, the bottleneck is when you have residents who are saying, I'm not gonna participate. Under the current rules we have, once, one person says no, we can't continue the work as it needs to be done.
I understand it. I gue, I guess my question is there that if it hasn't been for, let's say, thirty-plus years before this, why did they decide to do it now?
Well, I think it's probably, should've been started thirty years before, whatever date you would like, and it should've been an entire program throughout the county cleaning ditches. But there's certain rules they live under, and they have to have petitioning from the residents to go ahead and do it. If not, I mean, basically, it's on a person's property. They should basically clean their ditch, but not everyone does it the same or properly. And that's why we have these issues with the ditches not being cleaned out. So, the county through the Soil and Water District and the County Engineers Office has the ability to offer to go do that at a very reasonable rate, so the ditch is cleaned and maintained for water flow. I don't wanna get navigable waters and EPA and watershed. Nancy's better at that than I am. She might go give us a better history on that, if you want her to answer a couple of those questions, why it wasn't done, but that would be-
Well, we never had any trouble here, it seems like, with it before. I mean, I just, I guess I don't understand why is it being cleaned here now, and what's the purpose there? Is there, is there a purpose further on down the road that we don't know about?
The ultimate purpose of ditch cleaning is to start somewhere and then end at the, uh, we, we'd be at the river or wherever it needs to go. It has to have a starting point. We can't say that one person disagrees, and then we don't do anything at all. But I, I think what you're suggesting is transferring a problem from one area to another area doesn't accomplish a lot. And that's something that we're looking at. If we, if we clean three miles of ditch, and then we create the same problems three miles away that we alleviated, that's, that's not very satisfying, and I think we need to, that's one of the reasons why the Storm, Stormwater District was formed, so there's some resources to deal with these type of problems, because there wasn't funding to deal with these type of problems before. Normally, the ditch will have to be cleaned with outside funding, and then the ditch replaced on a maintenance, maintenance assessment. Actually, the, the Board of Commissioners had some, has some broad-based powers where they could go in and clean the ditch and assess that ditch cleaning cost to the, to the owners of the ditch. So, everything's being looked at right now with regard to that. And why wasn't it cleaned before? Because there was no money and nobody wanted to pay to do it. That's a really simple answer. Why is it being done now? Because flooding has gotten so bad in certain areas, and we're under certain EPA mandates with regard to controlling stormwater runoff that we have to, uh, begin the process. And the commissioners did put the fee in place a year ago. Uh, the board took that step, and we're working through the district now to come up with a larger plan to control stormwater throughout the county.
Like I said, I'm on the south side of a road, uh, of the road, and we're kinda like on the tail end there, but when it, uh, when it reaches that bottleneck, it backs up, it backs up worse than it should. I've been here twenty years on that side.
Don, I'll take your name and, and areas. We're, we're, we're starting to form a list, and, and Nancy's got a lot of that, and, uh, the advisory committee's taking projects and, and preparing lists. Not that it's gonna got, be gotten to anytime soon, so I don't wanna mislead you, Sarah, but, but it, it'll start being put on with the other things to take a look at.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, any more comments? Or Wayne, before I continue the meeting?
Yes, I can pretty much answer all of his questions, actually.
I figured you could.
The commissioners was gracious enough to fund this drainage program. Um, it was well-needed throughout the county. And how these programs such as Schroeder Ditch came about was residents on Schroeder Ditch addressed our office and wanted their ditch cleaned, because they knew there were monies available. They had issues in their area. Our goal, again, was to take it all the way to the Black River, but with the economy, the commissioners had no more funding to, uh, make this program move forward, so we stopped. As far as moving water, when you clean a ditch, yes, water is gonna move a lot quicker. Does a bottleneck right there where the three houses sit on Russia Road at the intersection? Absolutely. You've got, uh, three or four bends, and they're ninety-degree bends. There was a lot of water. We had a hundred-year storm. Naturally, it's gonna flood there, those houses there. I believe they're in a flood plain, so that's a whole nother issue. Um, the ditch was not altered. We did not move the ditch. We did not turn it any way. We can't do that without Army Corps permit. All we did was remove the shrubs, most of the trees at, uh, the owner's request. Even sometimes, we moved, removed more trees than what was necessary. But while we had the crews there, we did what we could to make things work, both for the commissioners, our office, and the landowner. We did scoop out to take the muck out of, out of the ditch, because there were in some places, we had five, six foot of muck that needed to go, but nothing was altered. If we had more funding, and now that the SWAC's here in place, naturally, we would love to take care of all the ditches in Marin County. I'm sure that's a goal for our office, the SWAC, plus the commissioners, especially the landowners. When this program had stopped, we have four ditches that we were ready to put up in for petition. So, it's, it's a huge project. When you have a big rain, especially a hundred-year rain like we had, you're gonna have flooding. And did the ditch cause problems? My personal opinion, no. It's gonna move more water, no matter how fast it rains, how much it rains. It's gonna move, and you're gonna have flooding. Cleaning ditches was not the solution to funding, or to, just to cause and stop flooding. It was to make sure that the water moves, get the debris out of there, so we don't have any hiccups or any log jams whatsoever.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing to a later date. We need to pick that date today, Jerry?
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh, what is your timeline, Jim? Do you think it would take to go over some of these issues, especially in regards to the airport?
Three weeks.
About three weeks?
Puts us on thirty days now. We can do it with them thirty days, so.
Okay.
I didn't say four, that would have been the whole thirty day.
No, I said with them thirty days, so let's see, today's the twenty-third.
About the thirteenth?
Thirty is the twenty-second, so we could do it the thirteenth or the twentieth.
Well, let's do it the thirteenth.
Can you, can you, are we out of town that day? Can you do it?
Oh, do it the following week, the twentieth, our last, that'll be our last meeting before we have to make a decision. So make it, uh, April twentieth at nine forty-five, Teresa?
Okay.
I'll, I'll be here on that date, but I'm only getting back the day before, so.
So just so, make everybody aware, the continued hearing on the Schroeder Ditch will be Wednesday, April twentieth at nine forty-five AM. There will be no more notices sent out and no more publications.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Anything further? Mr. Ca- uh, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming and hopefully we'll have it all together in three weeks.
Thank you very much. Uh, for those of you leaving, because we're going on discussions about the upcoming budget and cuts from the state of Ohio, if not, we'll give you guys a time to leave, so we don't have disruption. I'm sure a lot of you guys don't want to hear that from the ditch concerns. Morning, Phil. You want to give it a minute or so while they clear out?
Sure.
We're gonna discuss last week's.
The next one, I believe it's on the twenty-third. We moved it, do you remember? Well, you weren't, you weren't able to make the last one. You got my book. I'm just kidding.
I think it's the twenty-eighth.
No, we had sent, we, we. We'd sent out a letter, David.
Remind me to give you the other one.
The one to talk about some of the upcoming cuts and come here and discuss them, like a public comment. It's not a formal hearing of any sort.
It's the twenty-eighth, Mr. Williams.
We're allowed to dialogue in public, David.
David Yelling has.
Yeah. He's like, it wasn't on the agenda. What do you mean, you're talking about budget stuff?
Great. It came through the commissioner first.
You might want to.
Let these guys leave. Folks, if you're talking about the ditch, can you leave the room, please? We have other stuff to talk about here publicly. Thank you. Don't want to be rude, it's just so we can go on with the rest of our meeting. Well, we've had the pleasure of hearing from Doug Messer from Domestic Relations already, prior to the ditch hearings. Welcome, Sheriff's Committee.
Morning, Commissioners.
You received, uh, just some proposals laying out there, three, five, seven, ten percent that I brought up a week ago as we go into this process, and just any comments, and I know the sheriffs and the deputies are, you know, and the jail are very near and dear to everyone's hearts, so.
Yeah, Commissioners, thanks. Uh, I did prepare a statement that I did want to read. I, I do have an arbitration going on in my department right now, and I need to get back to testify, so I will read it, and then obviously, if we have more conversation down the road, which I'm sure we will, and we can get to that. Uh, dear Commissioners, as you well know, the sheriff's office has been operating on the same budget for the past three years with a twenty percent cut in the general fund monies, which the law enforcement deputies are paid from. As sheriff, I've been forced to make many difficult decisions in laying off personnel, as this deals with their livelihoods and families. In two thousand and nine, I had, I'd laid off twelve full-time deputies, as well as eight part-time deputies, which handled many of the court duties. I then had to move personnel around to handle the many duties of dealing with five municipal courts, as well as six county criminal division courts, three domestic relation courts, and one probate court. In two thousand and ten, I was again faced with deficit budgets in my general fund and jail funding, which ultimately led to the layoffs of two captains and one fiscal secretary, as I was not going to lay off any more law enforcement deputies. In reality, the public demands more services, and I need more officers to run, to run the Lorain County Sheriff's Office effectively and to the standards that I believe we should strive for in servicing the public. I also know at this time, we will not be receiving any increases in our budget. In December of two thousand and eight, the Lorain County Sheriff's Office had two hundred and fifty-nine employees. Two hundred and forty-four were full-time, two were part-time, and thirteen were intermittent. Presently, we have two hundred and thirty-one employees, with that being two hundred and twenty-six full-time, two part-time, and three intermittent. So we are down twenty-eight employees from two years ago. The Lorain County Sheriff's Office' general fund budget in two thousand and nine was slashed twenty percent by the Lorain County Commissioners, which reduced the general fund budget by one point one million dollars. It went from six point three million down to five point two, which we have survived on going into the third year. Obviously, prices never go down, such as gasoline, equipment, and others, they always go up, but we have adjusted and made it by. With the help of the jail administrator, Lieutenant Jack Hammond, and the entire staff, we have also reduced the jail division budget by a half a million dollars, and kept this budget less than twelve million, even with rising costs. We even returned monies from last year's budget in the jail, as well as the general fund. At one time, we had a hundred and three corrections officers, we are now at ninety-eight, as we are down five officers and have been for over a year. These positions are not going to be replaced at this time. So the sheriff's office total budget has been reduced over one point six million dollars. We have cut out all overtime for law enforcement in the jail, except extreme emergencies or when an officer works overtime on a call or is subpoenaed to court. The officers have also cooperated by many of them selecting not to receive pay, but take compensatory time in lieu of the payment. This has helped control costs. I have been in law enforcement for thirty-eight years, and at the Lorain County Sheriff's Office for over twenty-five years, and with the past ten years as sheriff. I have heard from several different commissioners, as well as County Commissioners Association, that a sheriff is not mandated to provide a road patrol. I couldn't disagree more. Sheriff's duties and responsibilities are outlined in twenty-nine of the thirty-three general provision titles of the Ohio Revised Code, and are specifically mentioned in one thousand twenty-seven specific Ohio Revised Code references. I think if the legislators that wrote these laws thought that the sheriff shouldn't have a road patrol or law enforcement duties, they would have kept them out of these provisions and laws. I truly cannot absorb any more cuts and provide the necessary services to the citizens of this county. The law enforcement division has been hit especially hard, where we used to have twenty-eight law enforcement deputies, we now have sixteen. We average two to three deputies on a shift, where we used to have eight to nine. Once again, I need to remind you that we never close. We are here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We do cost more because of this, but we also provide more services than any other county agency. I shouldn't have to remind you of what is going on in this country, which all of law enforcement is too familiar with. The violent attacks on law enforcement officers throughout this country. Just last March fifteenth, two thousand and ten, we lost the fine Alaria officer who was a former deputy, James Kerstetter. Early Saturday morning, Sandusky Police Department lost one of their finest, Andrew Dunn, to a tragic shooting. How many more of these tragedies have to go on to realize that we need to be adding officers for safety, not decreasing their numbers? I personally believe that no officers should be working by themselves. There should be two officers in each vehicle. But due to budget restraints and trying to get more coverage, this has become a safety factor for officers. These officers understand the dangers of these jobs when they signed up, but we need to try and find ways to make their jobs safer, not more dangerous. Deputies have a really hard time in getting any assistance, as their backup could be fifteen to twenty minutes away or more. I also have to squeeze my budget even more this year, as all officers need to have their vests replaced, as they have a five-year, a life cycle, and the five years are up this year. This will cost in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars. As you know, in two thousand and eight, we had a program replacing eight cruisers each year. This program has went by the wayside since budget cuts, and the vehicles are becoming older and racking up miles to the point that they will no longer be cost-effective to fix, let alone also become unsafe for the deputies to drive, which will increase the county's liability if something should happen. I was lucky enough to get grants from Congresswoman Betty Sutton and Senator Sherrod Brown to replace our portable radios and our mobiles in our vehicles, which have to be P twenty-five digital compliant by the year twenty thirteen. But these congressional earmarks have also dried up with the President Congress. Of the deputies I have laid off, two have found jobs at other locations and will not be coming back. The others are hanging in there in hopes of returning, but are becoming more and more discouraged by the day. We placed a great investment in these young officers with buying equipment and training, and they are also some of my most productive officers. But if this keeps up, we will lose them to other locations and be back to square one, should we be able to bring someone back. I believe that the sheriff's office has taken enough hits from these budget cuts. We cannot take anymore. I understand it is my job as sheriff to make tough decisions, which have included layoffs. But I also believe that it is the job of the county commissioners to also make tough decisions, which might not also be popular. But you are the fiscal agents of this county, and it is your duty to come up with the funding to fund the departments throughout this county. I need to bring back the laid-off deputies who perform any duties inside of the cities and villages also, such as serving warrants, monitoring all sexual offenders, serving all paperwork and process of the courts and the civil office, and also serving temporary protection orders and civil protection orders of the courts, as well as law enforcement purposes throughout this county. Law enforcement also needs the support of the communities that we serve. As always, I am more than willing to sit down and discuss these things with you. I am committed to the citizens of Lorain County and will do what I can do and sure that they receive the necessary services of the Lorain County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Commissioners.
Questions, Commissioners? Comments?
Uh, yes, Sheriff. Um, I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to, uh, increase our sheriff's road patrol, and, um, I'm hoping that we found a way to possibly do that. You know that, uh, yesterday and a month ago, we had sat down with the Community Foundation. Can we bring that up today? Is that all right?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay, and, um, talking about combining dispatch services, uh, county dispatch services, Lorain's dispatch, and Alaria's dispatch sometime, hopefully in the near future. That was a month ago, and after that meeting, I thought, well, if the county can't do it, county with county, then, you know, how are we ever gonna bring in, you know, cities to help co- uh, collaborate and save money in the cities and the, and the county? So we spoke with Sheriff's Committee and sat down and thought, well, if we bring his dispatch over to our nine-one-one, we can save the money in his dispatch budget and be able to take that money and use that for road patrol. So he's working on some numbers, him and, uh, Captain Kavanaugh, to see how much money that would save if we were to combine those two services. So we need to look at any county operations to see where we can combine services to save money countywide. And I think this is a great start, um, saving money for both of us and also to help you get more road patrol back on the road.
And I agree with you, Commissioner. We all gotta look at everything, and we understand that, and obviously, you know, we gotta look at all that stuff.
Right.
That's understandable.
I think the mandate, though, from the people, because in two thousand and nine, yourself, myself, and Dennis Will, I think we dated for four or five months trying to pass that criminal justice tax, and it wasn't successful. That going forward, there's gonna have to be serious structural changes if we're gonna continue to perform our mandates. And look forward to getting it. I mean, we started talking three, four, five years ago about combining some of the services when it comes to law enforcement. I remember sitting out with you and, uh, Sal Rivera, and at the time, Mike Metters from Alaria, on how we're gonna do that, and I think moving forward on the dispatch is one of the ways we can do it countywide, hopefully everyone else participates. Our nine-one-one now does fire dispatch for a lot of the communities within the county. And I think it would be a nice partnership to go forward on, Phil.
I agree, Commissioner.
Captain Kavanaugh said he should have it by the end of the week, some numbers for me, so we can hopefully, I'm glad we have one more week to get this settled before we have to make any decisions, so we can, like, you know, get an eye, or a, a real idea of how much it's gonna save us and how many, you know, how much money it's gonna save you, so we can get, hopefully, three deputies on the road.
And, and, as you know, and I'm, you're aware of it too, I'm not an advocate of more taxes either, but if we have no services, that's gonna affect the public even more, I believe, especially in law enforcement. Thank you, Commissioners.
I had a question for you. On the fees that you charge the prisoners, is there a way that we can increase that for, like, telephone calls or, uh, the work release programs?
Uh, we can look at that, but the problem we have, Commissioner, is a, a lot of those people in there are indigent, or they don't have the money to pay those fees, so you can rack them up and keep them in the books, but trying to collect them, and I've said this in the past, and the Commissioners understand, it's like getting blood from a turnip.
Phil, explain, uh, Mr. Williams knew, he hasn't gone through the process yet of where we forgive the fees that are racked up to the tune of a million dollars a year that are due us every year. The sheriff brings back the racked up fees that we, by resolution, then basically forgive or write off by law to balance the numbers that aren't collected, and I mean, it's seven figures.
We throw a fit every year.
That would be for, to be work release, not for telephone services, right?
One thing you have to be, uh, concerned about, Commissioner, is you can add fees on to people that are convicted. This is where the problem comes in. We hold, the majority of our inmates have not been convicted of anything yet. So you can rack up fees, and other sheriffs have done this. The person stays in jail for a year, they're, go to a trial, they're found not guilty. You pay the fees back to the person, and I can tell you, Kioga County paid back millions of dollars in fees they were charging. It sounds good in theory, but when you try to do it, you're gonna pay more trying to collect it than you are gonna get anything collected.
The practical application.
Correct, and, and the county clerk of courts does do a good job of trying to follow up. If some of these people can pay, they go after them, but I can tell you, when, once they go to prison, it's, it's tough to get any fees out of anybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning, just for discussion purposes? Welcome Prosecutor Will, longtime NoC. While you were meeting with Community Foundation, asked me with the prosecution.
Good morning, I'm Lorain County Prosecutor Dennis Will. Uh, my remarks and my answers to you are gonna be very short and sweet. You gave us the projections of three, five, seven, and ten percent cuts, and you wanted to know what that meant to us. Our general fund budget funds people that are statutorily mandated. That would be the civil division, which represents over a hundred and some different entities, including yourself, the adult criminal division, and the juvenile criminal division. If we had reductions in our budgets at any of those levels, it's going to be reductions in people to prosecute or represent those individuals mandated by law, so it means we're going to lose personnel. That's the short and the sweet answer. I know we've been up and down this road since we started dealing with this budget crisis back in two thousand and eight, but I think it's important that we focus in on a few things. And we've talked before when, when, uh, Commissioner Kokoski and Commissioner Kallo, when you took office, we tried to explain to you how the criminal justice system is interrelated, we're interdependent. One cannot operate independent of the others, that's the court, the clerk of courts, our office, the coroner, and the sheriff's department. And you have to keep that in mind when you look at these cuts, because if you remember, in two thousand and eight, we took a twenty percent cut. We reduced our hours, the court did not reduce their hours. Therefore, we had to continue to man the court with less people, and all that did was back up cases, which we are still dealing with today. So you have to look at that interdependency. If you don't acknowledge that, I don't know that you're gonna be able to adequately address budget problems collectively. So I, I would ask that you keep that in mind. I, I also offered, uh, Mr. Williams, when he came in, that we would do the same thing we did with you previously. I know you guys have been dealing with a lot of different issues since he came in, and I will keep that invitation open to have him come over with us, and we'll explain to him what we do and how we have that interrelationship. And I'm sure if he wants to talk to any of the other members of the criminal justice system, that they will do that for him. Finally, I think that you're going to have to decide where we're going. I know we, we worked very diligently to try to pass the tax. Uh, it was not passed by the citizens, I understand that. Whenever you collectively make a decision on whether or not you're going to attempt that again, or if you're going to consider that, because we need to get a final budget number that we're gonna be looking at next year, because as I see it, like these cuts now, I'm gonna tell you, don't make any cuts to me. Whatever you make, if you have to add it on to next year, because next year is gonna be catastrophic for my office. You cut me five percent, ten percent, fifteen or twenty, it's personnel going out the door. It's less people to do what we're required to do. We have to then rework the entire model of what we do and see if we can meet our statutory requirements. So I'm telling you, if we're looking at big cuts down the road, we need to have enough advance notice that we can sit down and try to figure out how best to deal with them. And I know that we've talked about this before, and that's why if, if, uh, Mr. Kallo's comments are accurate, that you're going to consider some of these discussions, we need to have some very legitimate and very direct discussions amongst all the members, okay, especially of the criminal justice system, because any of these cuts are gonna be catastrophic to us next year. So I would say, you know, we, we anticipated at the budget commission, we were gonna have a reduction in local government funds. We put that at twenty-five percent, which is approximately one point two million. We're only gonna have to account for six hundred thousand of that this year. My statement to you would be, let it sit where we're at until we have an idea of where we're going, and then we deal with it. And, and finally, I would ask that you at some point make a determination on whether or not you're gonna seek additional revenue. I agree with the sheriff. I don't like additional taxes more than anybody else, but we're really in uncharted territory here. The types of cuts that we're talking about, that we've discussed, are going to eliminate services. You know, we have deadlines on criminal prosecution. You know, we have deadlines on criminal prosecutions. It's going to affect us there. I tell Jerry, I never knew how much responsibility you have at the prosecutor's office to start talking about civil liabilities, okay? It's gonna affect us there and it's going to affect us in the juvenile prosecutions. Those are all the areas that are funded by the general fund budget. A lot of the other areas, we receive subsidies on and we receive support from children's services and things of that nature. So, this is going to impact those things that are statutorily mandated and that we have to deal with on a day to day basis. And so, my only point is, if we're gonna deal with it, we need to have enough advance notice that we can collectively address that.
Well, I would comment on that. That's why a week ago, brought out these proposals to start discussing where we have to be like, so we put away a million two to cover the expected anticipated twenty-five percent cut. So, we actually could go through this year without doing any cuts, but I think it would be catastrophic to wait till the end of two thousand and eleven, decide at the eleventh hour that we're going to make cuts, that if we can sit and work with the department heads through the next quarter and figure out how we're gonna redo county government structurally, which services aren't gonna be provided, and whether or not we're gonna seek additional revenues, those talks need to be started and soon, so we know by the end of the second quarter, which would be June thirtieth, prior to the new fiscal year starting date, or July one, if we were somewhere in line with them and go forward on those budget numbers, I think we can make a decision then and everyone will have plenty of time to figure out how they're gonna restructure, as you brought up, and/or the sheriff and/or the courts. And move forward, I guess. But that would be my intent, if we can start scheduling it based on the commissioner's availability, the budget director and department heads, and their key people on what can be ravaged and what can, as Commissioner Williams said, you know, what's mandated and what isn't. Let's look at those services and if need be, have to eliminate them.
I would agree, we need to know fair enough in advance, far enough in advance, that we have fair chance to be able to deal with the issues we're gonna have to deal with, because it's gonna be uncharted territory and I see this across the state. I've talked to other prosecutor's offices, everybody's dealing with the same issues.
And what you're saying is, because you are so intertwined with the court system, the only way you could take a cut is if they would take the same cut, correct? Basically, if they shut down a day, then you could shut down a day. Or you, you know, they, you know, didn't do as many cases, then you wouldn't have to have as many bodies there to do those cases. Is that kinda what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, everybody depends on everybody else for some function. You talk about the courts. Yeah, if the courts are operating, okay, then I have to have somebody there, even if it's not a prosecutor that's handling that case. That proves problematic when, you know, we don't have enough people and yet they continue to operate. The sheriff's department, you know, you heard all the different functions the sheriff talks about. They don't serve the warrants on time, case doesn't get into the system, causes problems for us. They serve them later, we get an influx of more cases. Subpoenas have to go out, notices have to go out, the sexual offenders registration, even the concealed carry, all plays into the things that we have to address. That's just the criminal end of it. Then you have to deal with the law enforcement end. You know, we deal with them or to reduce level that they can't get investigations done or get us everything we need. On top of that, then you have the issues of what they do for the court system, to transport the prisoners, to make sure we can carry out that. Clerk of courts office doesn't get paperwork filed, takes us longer to get cases to total disposition. And then finally, the coroner's office, you know, I mean, more so than ever, we've depended on the coroner's office to do more and more things for us. And when he's not available or he doesn't have the funding, you know, we've had to send out more types of forensic testing, 'cause he doesn't have the funding, all interrelated. So, everybody, whatever happens, okay, is gonna affect everybody.
Right, well, I was just thinking, when you said that, when you were short and the courts were up and running, that your caseload got, they got behind, because you didn't have enough bodies there to fill those slots, so.
Sure, if the court keeps operating at regular schedule and we don't, all you can do is look at it and see what's gonna happen.
Right, and they're basically telling us that they won't, are not gonna take a cut whatsoever, so puts us in a bind.
Probably why we need to all get together and look at everything.
Exactly. Thank you.
I think one of the things I wanna look at is the IT personnel that you have. I believe you have two people in your department, correct?
Two people? No.
Two? No?
I have one.
One? Okay. We have IT personnel here in the county and that, and I'm taking a look at the number of IT personnel that each individual department has, and we totaled up, it's about fifteen people. Now, for twenty-three hundred employees in that fifteen people, that's really out of, out of ordinary for a rational consider, going back to the private sector. Would you be willing to give up that one personnel? Because that would cut your, you would be able to meet your seventy thousand dollars and you would be able to use the IT personnel here in the county with Ernie Smith.
Well, I guess my quick answer to you would be no, unless you can tell me why we have that, that personnel person. That's, that goes back to understanding what we do.
Right.
He handles confidential information for us that we don't have, anybody else have access to, because of the nature of what we do.
Right.
Including the grand jury and other facets. So, I know that when this was talked about years ago, one of the things that was a problem was the security of the system. Now, clearly, if you can come up with a way that we can protect that, then we'd be so willing to look at it. But my first answer would be, until we can address the issues of why we ended up with our own IT person and why other counties don't have that, and I think you have to look at that first before you start trying to make those changes.
Well, I'm seeing a lot of people coming back saying, "Security, security." I mean, I come from the industry as well, but, you know, even in the military, that you have private individuals doing this. We can get the security clearance if needed. We can have the sheriff do a background check on it. It's just something that we need to really look at, when you come up here and you say you can't take a seventy or a ten percent pay cut and you're going back and I'm taking it, that you're saying the taxpayers need to pay for this. We have to look at everything and I understand that you're willing to do that, but it's just an area that I wanna look at for all of the county.
Okay, I think you misunderstood. I'm not talking about whether or not somebody has a security clearance.
Right.
I'm talking about who has access to information that they should not have access to.
Well, user access going through a computer system, I mean, that's, that's easy to do. We can go through, we can get Part eleven compliance, which is a regulatory mandate, that's not an issue. I mean, if you're talking, if you're worried about somebody hacking in or something like that, user access is required on that.
I'm talking-
But, I mean, we can get into the IT debate on this as well, but it's just a person, I just wanted to bring this up to give you a fair warning. That's where I'm going to be looking at, trying to get the cuts from different departments, is through IT personnel.
Well, that's fine. I know that you brought that up previously, you didn't bring it to me, you brought it to one of my staff people. My point is, we'll look at anything you want to look at. And no, I'm not saying that the citizens have to take whatever we say is our cost and they live with it. What I'm saying is, is when we get into these areas where you're gonna make major cuts that have never been made before, and that there's an interrelationship between all these different divisions that affect me, your example, if you don't cut the courts and I have to live with whatever schedule they give me, then I have to live with whatever schedule they give me. It's gonna have an impact. Now, also, there's gonna be other people that I would assume would have to be cut more, because there aren't cuts made in certain areas.
Right.
My point is, you have to look at that, is how it's interrelated and understand that to be able to knowingly make those cuts and deal with them. And as far as my position, I'm telling you that if we have to make those major catastrophic type cuts, we have to have enough warning that we can sit down and rework how the model of our office operates to be able to accomplish as best we can our statutory mandate. That's what I'm telling you.
Alright.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
I thought I saw Dr. Paul Mattis here. There you are.
George, you got a game to go to? Wear a hat, he says, when it's raining.
And clean underwear.
Looks like you're getting ready for game day.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I hope to be a little brief, I know everyone needs to do other things. But I did wanna just say, first of all, I'm really glad to be here. Can you believe that? I really am. And I'm glad to see y'all, as a physician and coroner, looking well. Anyway, but I am a little, I'm glad, but I'm sad at the same time. And primarily, I'm sad because I've been a fool. I've been a fool, probably all my life, but particularly the last twenty years, because it's always bugged me, as a farm boy, a kind of a conservative, frugal person, pay as I go type of person, I've always been very cognizant of the taxpayers' money and I've tried to always preserve it. I mean, I really treat it like, you know, I mean, really very carefully, I always have. Therefore, I never really, you know, had a very padded budget ever. I've always been very conservative that way. And, you know, this is during a time when it was in vogue for people, for government to be a little cushy and bloated around certain edges. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, just government in general. And that's always bugged me as a taxpayer and a citizen, really has. So, now, I'm asked to do, you know, some more cuts and over the last five years, I have cut already deeply into the lean. We're down three people, as you know, and, you know, we've gotten our system leaner and leaner to the point that it's strained. It's not a whole lot of fun. I'm making everyone angry and I appreciate your positions, you know, and the taxpayers' situation, I do. But I'm just telling you, from my point of view, we've cut deeply over the last five years already and there is no, no more lean. So, we're gonna be hurt severely and we're gonna have to eliminate services. So, I wanted to solicit your advice and any suggestions, either today, anytime, on how I can cut, because in this coroner's office, you know, we really don't have a lot. I mean, we use our own vehicles, our own cell phones and everything like that. We don't buy a lot of equipment. But we only have five areas in which we can cut services. Five duties that we do that are very important. One, and I'll just reiterate these and give you a few examples and kinda, you give me some direction, if you would. Autopsies, we can just stop doing autopsies, okay? That would save a lot of money. Storage of bodies, we can stop that. That's the second thing we do. We do death scene investigations, which really is basically on my time, if it takes me four hours, six hours, or eight hours, it's driving my vehicle there. But death scene investigations is a big part of what we do. Transporting bodies from death scenes is another very important thing that we do. That's the fourth. And the other thing is toxicology. Now, that's it. I got a simple office to run and simple duties, a little emotional at times. So, just, if you would bear with me, and I apologize to staff members and public about maybe being a little crude or graphic, but I did wanna give you like four, just four examples and give four hundred. Now, we had a young mother who, in front of her child and her husband, at the dining room table, blew her head completely off with a shotgun, completely. I mean, nothing but a neck and a little base of the tongue.
Oh, Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
You gotta stop for one second.
I'm sorry.
We need to do a tape change in the back.
Oh, okay. I thought you were gonna stop me because I was being graphic.
No, no, go ahead, you're good.
Okay.
But you are being graphic, but-
I do apologize and I'm being less graphic than it really is, but it's important that we understand this, what we're dealing with here, precisely what we're dealing with. And the point is, it's a horror scene. You got a distraught husband. I cannot go to the scene, I do go to the scene and I'm supposed to now say, "We're outta here, sir. Find someone to pick up the skull pieces in the living room, in the kitchen or wherever, and the brain, and here's a phone book, you call someone to transport this, your wife out of here." And not only that, I know you're devastated, you can't even think straight, figure out where you're gonna put her. You never thought that your twenty-three-year-old wife was gonna be dead and you're gonna need a funeral home. Family, her family, of course, thinks that he shot her, but I'm supposed to not transport, 'cause I, that's one area that I can cut costs. I cannot transport her, I cannot do an autopsy, I cannot find out if she was, not do toxicology, find out if she was drugged before this happened.
Doctor, just real quick, with that example, what would that cost?
It's about a hundred and thirty dollars for the transport.
Hundred and thirty?
Which is about half the price of everyone else in the state's paying, around two fifty. Seriously, we have a very favorable. And it's always adverse circumstances, it's nasty, you have body bags, you have two men, you have a vehicle, you have gasoline, and they stand around for two, three hours while we're doing the investigation. So, it's very costly. Go to the hospital for storage or whatever, but it's a hundred and, about a hundred and thirty. Thanks for the question. I'll give another example.
Well, my question, I got another part on this.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, not, I just tried to take emotion out of it and look at the budget, because that's what we have to look at today.
Yeah.
Is, that's one example. How many cases do you get like that a year? I'm just trying to put a dollar figure on-
Sometimes two or three a day or more.
Two or three a day?
Oh, overall, I mean, transports, we have five cases before eleven o'clock in the morning, you know, between five or six in the morning.
Well, alright, let me rephrase the question. How many transports do you really need that's going to be needed for law enforcement, for evidence or something like that?
Nearly, almost every case that we do, and I'll give you more examples for why. And one example would be, an elderly lady dies at her home event and she has no relatives or she has no family that can be found. Maybe she has a niece that lives in, somewhere in Hawaii or wherever. That body has to be transported, okay? It's not the graphic case that we just talked about, but that, we can't just leave the body there. And I can't tell the sheriff's deputy or the police department, "Well, you guys figure out what to do now." You see, so that, so we transport.
Well, if you didn't do the transportation, like you said, with the one case, how much money would you save a year?
With the one case?
Well, other cases, that's just one example, you're four hundred.
What's your budget for transportation?
It's not very, it's not very much and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the budget numbers with me, but-
I think a budget breakdown on each of the five you're talking about would probably be helpful in discussions with the questions that are being asked of you.
Okay, that's fine. I was gonna do that, I just didn't wanna get into the, well, I know you do, but I didn't wanna just talk budget numbers, because that's a vague thing, but it doesn't give you the understanding. I'm trying to invite everyone into my world a little bit, that, so that you understand that we're not just talking about raw numbers, we're talking about really important human services on devastated citizens and a problem that has to be solved and someone has to do it, and I don't know who's gonna do it. Now, we, another case is, and this, these cases are not isolated, this, we can get, I can get you a handful of these from every, nearly every week, for sure every week. But we had a gentleman who hanged himself in a trailer in the summer from a cord and he, his body was found two months after he was hanged, so his body was decomposed hanging from this cord still. His boots were on the ground, obviously, with his feet still in them, had fallen off. I can just say, I'm outta here. I'm not coming in this smelly trailer in the middle of August. And sheriff's deputies, Lorraine PD, you figure out how to transport him. Or, there's no family for this guy. We need to do something with him as a matter of hygiene and public decency. So, I end up transporting, I put him in the hospital. We have a favorable contract with the Aliri Hospital for storage, so it's very good. So, that's one way to cut costs. Don't transport him, don't store him, don't do a toxicology, don't even look at the body. We don't know if someone else strung him up or if he strung himself up or if his girlfriend's, old girlfriend's new boyfriend did it. We don't know. Another case, and I'm gonna be done very shortly.
Okay.
But I do want you to understand the kinds of problems that I have, and when I only have five areas that I can make any significant cuts in, I don't know what the answer is. Apparently, healthy seventeen-year-old boy was found dead face down and we, and I've had about seven cases like this in the last eight weeks. It's literally between seventeen and twenty, twenty-something, young people found dead. Seventeen-year-old boy found dead lying face down in his bed, half-eaten piece of pizza. He was found about one o'clock in the morning, about two hours after his buds, his friends left. Mother found him. his buds, his friends, left. Mother found him. Now, should I tell the devastated mother? "Well, lady, police are asking me to come to the scene and help them. If I do go to the scene, 'Mom, here's a phone book. Find a livery service to haul your son out of here.' And I know you're kind of shocked, but you do that. And not only that, I know you haven't thought about a funeral arrangements for your 17-year-old. But it's up to you. Because guess what? I'm going back to bed. It's 2:00 in the morning. Now, I cannot transport. I cannot store for it. And if I don't do an autopsy on this kid, I won't know if he had a congenital heart defect. I won't know if he had a congenital brain aneurysm that blew out, just like his dad did when his dad was 28. I don't know if he choked out a hunk of pizza. I don't know if he took a drug overdose, because I'm not going to order toxicology, because that costs a lot of money. And I don't know if his friends choked him. I don't know if he got into an argument over a girl, or drugs, or whatever. So we won't even look at it, and I'll just go back to bed. Quite frankly, I'd like to do that. Because I'm getting really tired. I really am. That's another, so those are the areas we can cut. We can cut, and don't do a toxicology on this young kid. Don't tell the mother what happened to her 17-year-old son. And she said, "He was healthy. He played football. He went to work every day. We're not doing an autopsy, ma'am, because that costs me money. I'm not putting him in the hospital. I'm sure as hell not gonna transport him out of his bedroom. That's up to you. Figure it out. It's 3:00 AM now." We have, I mean, just an incredible case. I had a 25-year-old girl found dead in her very nice place, nearly nude on the floor with a bath curtain on the floor. She's sitting there with a mass of IV tubing. I haven't seen so much IV tubing since I left the ICU. She's got needles, syringes, angiocath. I mean, literally, if you saw the pictures, you guys would be shocked. I mean, I show it to people who are pretty hardened, and they go, "Oh, my God." Tables full of drugs, stolen from hospitals, some prescribed, some stolen. She's got blood all over the place. She's got needles and syringes. I mean, literally, scattered all over the place, and a mass of tubings. I'm not supposed to transport her. I'm not supposed to put her in the morgue. I'm not supposed to take her someplace where I can look at her really good and see what happened to her. I'm not supposed to order a toxicology, because I can save some money that way. I really can. Maybe I won't even go to the doggone death scene, because if she was found early in the morning, I'm not keen on that. So those are areas that we can, and guess what? Parents are mad. Friends are mad. The police want to know where she got the drugs. A very prominent hospital to the east of us sent their lawyers and their detectives asking me, they have a legal department, a detective bureau, "What's the toxicology? Did she die of a drug overdose? Did she die of our drugs? Where did she get the drugs? Which drugs were they specifically?" Sorry. You know what? I'm not ordering a toxicology, because that's gonna really cost me some money. And I have control over that. And guess what? They are very, very, very angry. So these types of things happen on a daily basis. And I try, I mean, I can't tell you how hard I've tried to cut back on toxicology, cut back on transport. I mean, I felt so bad, I feel like I healed half the time.
I have a question. Are you allowed to charge for some of those services, toxicology reports or transport? Charge back to the family or the estate?
No, we have not, there's no mechanism for that, Jerry, is there?
No.
I mean, no, you know, I-
But just a service that we're mandated to provide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's very expensive, because, you know, if I do a toxic, and, no one wants to pay for it. Everyone wants it, though, you know?
Right. That's what I mean. If somebody wanted it, like, somebody getting killed in a car accident wouldn't necessarily mean they would have, unless they were smelled of alcohol.
Right.
Do you have to do a toxicology report?
Well, to be proper, to do the job as it's intended, to be scientifically accurate, et cetera, yes. And I'm glad you brought that up, because part of me making my confessions about being such a fool, you brought up a car accident. I had a gentleman, can we turn the tapes on? But I had a gentleman who was seen swerving on a road, not that elderly, I mean, a little bit older than me.
That's young.
Yeah. Anyway, he was seen swerving. He hit two mailboxes, hit, glanced off a tree, smashed into a house, went in the house, it exploded. While he was in the vehicle, he was slumped over the steering wheel. However, made two cellphone calls from inside that vehicle, believe it or not. Fire department, he was entrapped, could not get him out. Car burst into flames. He died. Did he die of a heart attack? Insurance company wants to know. Wife wants to know. Was he intoxicated?
Mm-hmm.
Did he have a high carbon monoxide level? Did he die of an MI, a heart attack in the car after the crash and the impact with the steering wheel?
Was it natural, or was it an accident?
Yeah, was it an accident? And did he have carbon monoxide onboard?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's very difficult. And you're, like, how do you not get a toxicology on something like that?
But you don't do, you don't have to do it on every case, correct?
No, no. If it's someone who has a natural disease, and with the complexity of our society and the fact that so much strange stuff is going on anymore, you know, the routine deaths of, you know, of a 92-year-old grandmother on a farmhouse would have been handled by the family docs 40 years ago, 50 years ago. Nowadays, her drug-afflicted grandson lives in the house. He's the only heir, and he does, he wants to get some more crack money, or whatever. So, you know, we do send law enforcement there, like the county sheriff's deputy, or wherever this is. And they call me. I evaluate the situation. Then I find out and review the medical records that she's had diabetes, pancreatic problems, and a lung tumor, and she's under constant medical care. And it's a good family, and it's very nice, and we don't have to do anything. Therefore, that's natural. And I wouldn't transport her. I wouldn't transport her, you know? Even though the family says, you know, "We don't know what to do." So I would save that kind of money.
We, you and I had spoke, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago or so, and I had asked you, now that we had, we have a new coroner in Cuyahoga County, and I know a lot of our autopsies are done because they're lifelighted to Cuyahoga County, and they do one on every single person from Lorraine County. So it's like the gravy train over there. They're making all kinds of money on us. Have you been able to contact them over there to see if we can work out any kind of arrangement?
Yeah. Well, I've tried, but the coroner over there has been displaced.
Right.
And it's really difficult. And because he's not really talking to anybody right now.
Oh, okay.
And so I haven't, to answer your question, no, there's been no arrangement. And I'm gonna tell you, it's very difficult, because every small county in the state has the same problem. Most small counties are actually better off than we are, because, you know, and I don't want to compare us to me to other departments or other counties too much, but, you know, there are counties that have 45,000 people in them, and they have nearly my budget. And they have four or five people in their departments.
You do have a very small budget. And I don't know if this number is accurate, and I think Lisa already left, but it shows your budget in 2004 is 442,000. And now, in 2011, it's 438,000. So, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, it, I thought it was four, one place along the line.
Because that's really, I mean, over the last seven years, it's a $4,000 cut in your budget. So it doesn't seem like a very big cut. And you said you lost three people in that span?
Yes. Yeah.
But you only lost $4,000.
I have to look at those numbers. But the thing is, we have, we're down two part-time physicians and an investigator, okay? But with the complexity of the society and the situations that's going on in our county, the drug, et cetera, and problems with young people dropping dead of drug overdoses, people are demanding more services, tremendously more services. We're more crowded. There's more accidents. There's the CSI factor where people want to know. And they expect us to do everything for all people at all times.
You sound like you're a commissioner now.
Right, right. I understand. It's, I know how you feel.
Yeah.
Everyone wants something done. And rightfully so, because as, in those examples, am I supposed to tell the mother, "We're walking out on you? We don't know why your kid's dead?" That's not very satisfactory, you see? So increasingly, I mean, I can't tell you the number of young people. You guys would be shocked at the numbers and the number of deaths. Not just the teenagers and the 20-year-olds, but the 30s and the 40 to 50-year-old group. In a six-week period, we had over 20-some people between 41 and 47 dying, just in a six-week, this year already. Just one, I mean, and that's just one age group. And we have this problem. So we have a pretty good volume. The complexity of the surgeries that are going on, the people go in for surgeries, and if there's a death in the hospital after surgery, during surgery, or in recovery room, they call me. Because the hospital doesn't want to be, you know, the fox watching the chicken coop. The family doesn't want the hospital involved. They call me. And the other problem that we have in this county are the prisons.
So how do we, how do we change it so that, we have to change it by Ohio law to be able to charge for services for those types of services?
Yes. I think so. And Jerry would be the expert on that. But I've brought this up numerous times about how can we charge people? And it's really difficult. I mean, I've charged, we try to charge the families for body bags. It's a heck of a thing. It's not very much fun. And we're talking about a $50 body bag on a transport. And the transport people say, "Well, jeez, I mean, this is awfully expensive. We're doing these heavy-duty body bags, and we're doing it for the convenience of you and everyone else." So, but we have been pretty successful in shifting that cost for the most part. Now, with a homicide victim, we don't ask the, you know, the family of the homicide victim to go pick up the cost of the transport from the death scene in the street and the body bag and all that. We just don't. No one does that, I know of. But maybe you're on to something.
I'm not just talking, I'm talking, you know, insurance companies needing information to find out what type of death it was, if it was natural or accidental. That maybe the insurance companies need to pick up some of these charges. I'm just, or the hospitals, if they make a, you know, a mistake in the operating room, to find out what went wrong, they should pay the price, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
Somehow, we should be able to charge for services.
They're not very interested in that, of course, you know? So...
I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I've taken enough of your time. Thanks for being patient and putting up with my stories. But I wanted to bring you into my world a little bit and let you know about how hard we've tried to reduce costs. And I've already making tons of enemies. I'm making a lot of people angry about not giving them the answers that they feel they deserve, and they probably do. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you.
No, we appreciate the job you do. Like I said, it's just a budget issue that we have to deal with. And unfortunately, a lot of times, you have to take the emotion out of it in order to deal with the numbers.
Yeah.
But I came to your office. We spoke. You told me about the service you do, your holidays you miss and everything by providing the service for that. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Doc. See ya. Shirley, comments?
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin. I'm not quite sure how to comment on this, but I guess I need some clarification. I gather a letter was written out to all the departments of the county, asking them to make more, those various people to make more cuts. Is that correct?
No.
No.
That's incorrect.
Only some people got a letter.
No, that's incorrect, too.
All right. Well, please clarify it for me.
Okay, you didn't ask a question. You made a statement. So...
No, I said I, okay.
If your question is what we did, and then I can tell you what we did. What we did was, we sent out letters to all the general fund departments, most of them being elected officials, and indicated that the board was looking at various scenarios between 3%, 5%, 7%, and 10% with respect to the annual appropriation, which needs to be passed at the end of the month, and inviting them to come in and have a discussion with the board about their current situation, and if there was anything they could do to work with us.
Well, was this mentioned at the last meeting that I missed?
No, it was not mentioned. This was something-
It actually was. Excuse me, it was. I brought it up.
Was it at the meeting?
When I presented this to the commissioners. I brought it up at last week's meeting, that we should send out to the elected officials, start getting some feedback, to start working on the forthcoming cuts after we received the governor's number on that Tuesday.
Well, I want to say that the most interesting meetings that I have been to with the county commissioners were the budget hearings last year. And I would hope that any such, well, today, you've had four people, four departments, or whatever you want to call, whatever the correct terminology is, make presentations. One of whom did not give a long report on what the court needs, or what, why it can't cut, and so on. I would hope that if you're going to have these meetings, and you're going to talk about more cuts in any of these departments, that these meetings would be public, and then we'd all be able to hear what the pros and cons, and what will be missing. I mean, I could comment on a number of the reports I've heard today, but I'd rather wait until I heard everything that I'm, that's gonna be possible to hear and that you have to consider. Is that possi, going to be possible?
The, I'm sorry, just, Commissioner, please.
My intent, Shirley, as I spoke earlier, was I would hope through the next quarter that we can hold weekly meetings, and they would be public right in here, 12 or 1:00 in the afternoon, whatever it is for the electeds, to get together by department to figure out where the cuts could come from, what services can be continued or not continued. As Commissioner Williams said, what's mandated, what isn't mandated, and what we can stop funding to get to our end result and start doing some structural changes to the Lorraine County government to meet the budget the taxpayers have given us. That was my intent. I haven't got an agreement from the commissioners yet on that, but that is my intent.
Well, I certainly hope something like that will be done, because as I say, the hearings last year were very informative, and I think the public needs to continue to be informed as well as they were then.
Just for clarification, the meetings are public. So you said you hoped they would be public, but they are. We received correspondence from probate court, who couldn't be here today.
Nabokowski.
Quite a lengthy correspondence. We received correspondence from common pleas court. I believe they'll be in next week, because we have to take action next week. But we have received correspondence from them. And you said we received something from-
Nabokowski couldn't be here. He had a doctor's appointment.
Couldn't be here. So those departments that are not here today, I don't want to misrepresent that they haven't responded with something. And I anticipate seeing them here next week. And also, I met with Mr. Messer from Domestic Relations, and we had a number of questions. And I believe he's bringing back information possibly next week, too, with regard to domestics.
Well, I do think it will also be important for the public to know that those kinds of things are coming up, so they'll turn up to find out what they're gonna be, what they voted to give up.
Morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Oberlin. Just to follow up on that a little bit, even if the replies that you got were listed in the board correspondence, we would have had a heads-up.
Just, just, just got them yesterday.
Okay, well, but we've had times when we've had a new agenda produced when we got here that was a little different from the one that went out.
Just to let you know, I received those at 4:20 yesterday, and my agenda's printed at 3:00.
And we're not angry at the Department of Defense. Let me help you. We're doing a lot with very little, okay?
I understand.
So that's, as Shirley said, the taxpayers are getting what they voted for.
No, I do understand.
The ability to do those last-minute things are becoming more and more remote, because we just don't have the bodies.
I do understand. And I'm just saying that, and it was partly a reaction to Commissioner Kalo saying something back to me when I expressed surprise that we were gonna have these presentations. Because they're not on the agenda anywhere, there's not even a sort of a placeholder that says, "And we're going to discuss these things," it doesn't give people an opportunity to know. And of course, if it is in the board correspondence, it's also in the board correspondence. And if it's on the agenda, there's a folder. But we're left in a position here where, and we, I understand why it's coming late. But even if there's a placeholder next time, that, so that these, these replies that you got can be looked at, and I understand, there's going to be an agenda item next time that's gonna take care of all of this, because you have to make a thing. And so there will be a report in there that is longer than a one-sentence thing saying, "Approve the appropriation." There will be a folder that has that appropriation and what was originally planned, and things like that. So I, but I do understand things coming in late. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page. Then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.